Okay, good evening and welcome to the town council meeting. We'll start with twenty-two, twenty-three, two-oh-seven, Chair's remarks. Yeah, the heat's okay, hopefully they're off shortly enough. Less noisy than it is. Because I thought it was that edge on the east, it says eighteen degrees.
Yeah, the thing up here, so that's why we're coming down there.
Yeah, what is that? So I just started a couple of things, obviously since our last council meeting, I think just possibly was known a day before, the level up a bit wasn't successful, which was obviously greatly disappointing for Bingley. Um, but effectively no area in the country, it was more around one level, not a bit, got anyone in round two. Which does relate back to the question as to why people let Bingley, of course, when people consider, you know, if you're going to come on back to those people, um, those areas. But obviously it's very disappointing saying, and in fact the way it was saying, what comes, what next, and what breadth of the coverage next. You would say the place from the general point of view, there is something that's popped off in the public face, and we'll cover that there. Um, this research is clearly going on in around the area, hopefully people have seen that and have figured out what with the way it's going to happen. Uh, and the other thing that happened towards recently is obviously councillor Dawson has resigned. Obviously in the past, she's got a lot of times to stand and, oh, she has stepped back before, she could pull back this time. But, uh, first of all, circumstances and commitments, she's got, uh, time before I had to go to council, which is dreadful. And the, the advice we've got from Y O C A is that we don't need to cooperate, because effectively by the time we've cooperated, get the time with the next round of election, we can go forward and then draft.
The actual services, it's a big old track.
Oh, yeah, so I don't, I don't propose that we do that, that person, you know, people get the food on the table, but obviously all posts are up for election on the fourth of May. So moving on then to twenty-two, twenty-three, two-oh-eight, apologies for absence, has everybody seen the board? We've got three apologies. Apologies for getting drunk out of car if you pay for a walk.
Mark, apologies, Mo Carmichael, busy, I mean, like all week, sent her.
So, okay, for the round, all the way back, yeah, that's down. That's a clock. The third floor, yes, we're not, second weekend, it's good, all right, yeah, and councillor Drucker. Very far, by the same time, well, it's all, okay. Twenty-three, two-oh-nine, disclosures of waters. Do you see declarations of any issues with councillors for items in the gender? Any declarations from anyone in the room? Do you see, you hear the request for this one's identity, okay? Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-why, minutes of a free discussion, is that the government directions?
So, apologies, thank you.
Four and five, we accept the minutes.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't present.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-one-one, confidential items to discuss in the comments, and twenty-two, twenty-three, two-seven. Is anyone of anything that they're moving in, up and down, you don't like? Well, okay. Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-one-two, public participation, so members of the public are reminded, this is a fact, you need to speak in the meeting on any topic relevant to, um, which is that. I'm, I'm not sure if Geoff really, I just, I would claim as the.
These are my town councils.
A prospective law person, for those of you that, um, since you became the last one doing, introduced yourself. And a member of the public and a member of the day of the by-election group, Mr. Becker. Geoff, did you say?
Yeah. Uh, I'm just short, uh, wanted to come along to thank you all, really. Um, so as you may have seen from Lewis' curdell post, uh, the community gift card, uh, has been unsuccessful. We've been unable to secure the support of Bealden and Shipley. Uh, Shipley's reasons remain inexplicable to me at this particular juncture. We went along to a town council meeting, they're, effectively they're applying a committee equivalent to what Bealden have and what we have. Um, and they, we talked through the scheme, we talked through the engagement with businesses, and at the end of the day, the simple conclusion was that they felt they could, they wanted to go down a different direction. Uh, as yet, and that was a year on, in that meeting, they've not come back with any alternative plan. And so when we approached Bealden, Bealden were concerned about sharing, uh, the burden of the scheme, uh, just with Bingley alone, and the viability of just being spread across two councils. Um, so, uh, unfortunately, they've withdrawn as well, so they feel that without the support of Shipley, they can't go ahead and support the trial party proper. However, I am grateful that Bingley Town Council, uh, has demonstrated a firm commitment to supporting local businesses, and was prepared to engage in the scheme, admitted, and very rightly, on the proviso that other councils engaged with the scheme to share the burden. So on that one, I commend you all for supporting the scheme, and thank you. Uh, while the scheme is at this moment dormant, because we're going to have to go away and think about how we could possibly launch something like that, or look at different economic support packages for businesses, uh, and we'll do that in due course. But thank you all, and I'll be sharing it post-later, but I, before I did that, I wanted to come and talk to you guys, thank you. Uh, and I'm just here for the public participation, so if you guys have any questions, uh, related to any items, feel free to find them over this way. With, of course, the chair's permission to meet as well.
I was going to fire you on, just, just, just to get it out of the way, can you just say two, two words about this festival?
Uh, yeah, uh, as you've seen, it's a great boom for Bingley. Uh, Ian, uh, who runs the Saltair Village Festival, uh, which is a big success every year, uh, came along and spoke with Marcus and myself about running a similar festival in Bingley. Uh, well, not a similar festival, he wanted to run something different, something that would be open to all members of the public, so a free festival where people could come and enjoy entertainment and follow its music. Uh, in terms of how they gain revenue from it, there'll obviously be storms around, uh, the park, there'll be a sort of V I P ringed-off area in centre where people can pay, uh, to go and have a seat in front of the, uh, stage, in front of the movie screen, uh, but all members of the public are welcome to attend, and I'm hopeful it will be a great event, so, um, we'll keep you updated as we have more information. When's that, Bill? Uh, next man.
Anybody got any questions?
Yes, twenty, twenty-four.
Geoff? So, do you want to sign your, your, uh, Geoff, your other area tops? Moving on then to. Twenty, twenty-two, two-on-three, ongoing items, so it's quite a big, quite a big list tonight, so first off, Bingley, full on, we did have an email, sort of, the last week or so, about whether it wrote, friends are going to call, uh, does anybody get a chance to see it?
Chair, if I could say something, because I went both as the town council's representative, as well as wearing my hat. And I had, and I had to say that it was by any standards a successful event, you know, there was plenty of community interest, um, and obviously frustration that progress hadn't been made. I, I think that the focus was really what's going to happen next. No one knew the answer, but I think what's, what's going to happen next, whether, whether, um, there could be further lobbying and campaigning and in support of, um, trying to retain public swimming facilities in Bingley. But, but, but I think also there was concern that the council needed to not necessarily put all around in some one basket. In, I mean, there's talk of around the three level that bit, and, and I, and I do know that the council have now received feedback on the level two bit, um, and they are, they are now considering whether they can enhance the bid and put a new bid forward. They've received, you know, the detailed feedback on what we presented. Um, but, but even if they do, we know, and from other planning around bits, processes, that only a minority are successful, and only the, the very best are successful along with the other criteria. So I think the, the feeling of the meeting was, you know, the council should be exploring other options as well, um, to try and ensure that we don't end up having, um, you know, a sort of dilapidated swimming pool building without swimming available, because there's only so long presumably that the council can continue to support that. And, and as always, it was also linked to the neighbouring town hall, in the old Bingley Town Hall site as well, where, I think similar issues, but different issues apply there. So I think that there weren't the answers in that meeting, but I think that the, the community still expressed strong views that they wanted something to happen with, um, you know, swimming facilities in Bingley, and they wanted to make sure that those sites weren't just left to go to vacuuming, like, you know, the Bingley sites have been, have happened in recent years.
Did you say, Geoff, that you went as a town council representative?
Yes.
Uh, well, on the next option, D four, is Bingley Paul, council's given us Curdall Williams, the informal work, we don't add the formal work, we're without you.
We didn't work that many years ago, what name I have, I have a three to, because of clash of left and right, and Geoff, so.
I was going to attend anyway.
You, you were something for, absolutely, well, thank you, thanks, that guy.
So, a, a bit jumping forward, Geoff, but the, that is under correspondence, is it?
Yeah.
Cheery, which is named.
I know a bit about that.
I got from a bit.
Yeah.
Are friends of Bingley Paul, have you been in contact with the person that?
Well, well, certainly the councils, um, are aware of that organisation's part proves it. Without, I mean, I don't, I don't know what's in the public domain and what isn't, but all I can say is that I'm aware of that situation, that that particular company was in discussions with Bradford Council last summer, and then, for some reason, I don't know, it, the thing broke down. So, um, as, as far as I understand it, is that Bradford Council, um, are looking at whether there's scope for some public-private type partnership solution, um, to that site, and it might be that that particular company, with our, with our organisation revived their interests in it. Uh, it's a bit difficult to reach, because I, I, I'm told that I, now, I don't exactly what the position is, but, but they, they were a realistic, um, they were the only party in discussion with Bradford Council last year.
So, so this is, this is, this is the group that were part of what was, what was a rich, you know, to, to plan B, sorry?
Yes, because, yeah, because you remember when Angela Blake from the council came to this meeting, I think in this very place. Um, you know, she did say that, um, you know, there was a plan B then, for, you know, I, and I know that the other councillors who want, want to know what the plan B now is, um, we've, interestingly, we've been invited, after I wrote to them last week, we've been invited for a meeting for all three councils with the strategic director, um, place, and maybe a couple of weeks' time, on that very theme.
Well, hopefully they'll update us after this. Okay, so, next one going higher is the changing prices, it's open, so let's see.
It's open.
It's open?
It's open, it's being used. Uh, the formal opening is next Saturday. This Saturday, well, this Saturday coming up, then, it's next Saturday, and the fourth, the third, all welcome. Um, I was disappointed to read in the F and G P minutes sewage issues, and I wondered whether we can tackle that now or when it comes up on the F and G P. Anyone know anything about sewage issues?
Only that, it would have put at that meeting that, um, tell them about the call the man that cleanses the toilet.
Phil, yeah.
Phil had unblocked it a couple of times, and been told that he had, he had to do anything about it, so.
Nice job.
What was your?
No.
But I don't know what, now, I, I, I'm, I'm thinking down there.
Ask the band who were there, so they're going to arrange a site visit with them and some pragmatic, it's a bit talk of sewage and the, you know, drink.
They ran that show, yeah, I think John was pouring twenty liters of water down there and unblocked that one, so.
No, well, it, it, somebody had been, was it, somebody had been from Bradford Council to unblock that, yeah. I just put that down to see if it was running, and it, and it ran away, so I'm fairly confident it's going to be okay. Well, okay, it's down there, it's, it's.
Okay, so, so, that was it, yeah.
Um, Geoff, what did you say?
Chair, was there anything on, uh, uh, sorry, I was aware, aware I was away at the last meeting. Um, is there anything about soda panels and, and all that, or is that one quiet or something?
Um, it's, it's not gone quiet, but we're still waiting for the food to build and store. All that, it's.
From, it's, it's mentioned on F and J P, um, minutes that, uh, in fact, it said, eh, that you're arranging a meeting, I don't know, that's why it has to say that, just like.
Yeah, I'd like to hear back from, um, the, the Y P S, isn't it?
Yeah.
As, as we had this, but we want to, um, look at the roof, etc.
Yeah, yeah. When you say it like that, you're thinking that must be something that, might be what they're doing, don't you?
Possibly. Anything else anyone want to raise on, 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 on? So, we're moving on to D, this is, this is a long list of partnership roles, but we've, we've appointed people, and we need to keep abreast of what is, if there is anything happening within these groups. Uh, now, first one, we are the forces, government, council, dark, not hairs, I'm assuming, we've got a whole day on that. And we've got the bingo chain of trade.
There's been no meetings on that, unfortunately, they're all a bit add up, and they tend to be moving on the hoof rather than actually officially having meetings, which they used to have, it's, it's dropped to pieces a bit with it.
So the three, uh, nominated councils have, uh, have all attended, uh, in suspo, in support of the event, haven't we?
Yeah, but they said they had a meeting, that, rather than.
Yeah, but we jammed, they had, we used to get information, so hasn't there been any, uh, do you know, hasn't there not been any David?
No, not, not since, I imagine, Christmas.
Because they actually, the one that we did go to, uh, they issued a list, didn't they, of future maintains, and, and then we used to get notification from the secretary, but I've heard nothing since, so that's an improved situation.
Okay. It's probably been the same with a lot of them, so being with partnership, this was a meeting myself and councillor Dawson, and we got, we know the maintenance, certainly, we've been wanting to, I don't know, that, that room is a very critical reforms, it's going to. Being with Paul, the informal councillors, well, we don't know if they have.
And no contact whatsoever, no request for attendance, no request for any help, no request for any lobbying, none of that.
Uh, next one, the destination plan working with the council trust, I have had a couple of informal conversations with C R team, they are looking at working with Bradford to a number of things in the run-up to sixty-four to twenty-twenty-five. Um, I was told I'd be invited to a meeting by in January, but that meeting's not come to fruition yet. I think things will happen there, but they haven't today. Parish councils, that is all right.
Well, that's me, and the last two meetings were both landed on our meeting, uh, I'm certainly apologies for this one, which was tonight. Uh, but of course, I don't have a compatible device, because this, the, uh, this council decided that it wasn't worth providing a device for them to use, so the only one that can help is, is one in the office, so, um.
You say that they're just teams, but it seems they're not vice versa.
Absolutely, teams, and I, I, they come back with my device, and I don't think I should have to buy a device just to, 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 um, some of the Bingley Town Council meetings. Um, it's even worse now, because, um, uh, Microsoft have decided to change, I think, so this, I can't get, well, I can get emails, but I can't get them on, on, on the app, on this, so. Just letting you know that I'm just completely just comfortable that that decision hasn't been made, I know it's democratic, but it seems as though, you know, not, not worth, you know, not worth it, worth, anyway, carry on. So that's me, if you want me to carry on, I will carry on, if I get the opportunity, uh, I can get on a laptop, I've spent half an hour on the laptop for, for this, for the F and G P meeting last night.
So that laptop is there for you to use?
Absolutely, I can't usually like a laptop, that, when I've emailed Eve this morning, laid on my bed, can I? You know, to be fair, so that's.
Chair, chair, is, is that laptop and additional laptop in the office?
No, it's, it's as fair.
It's the old laptop.
An old.
Would, would, is that not something which could be?
Yes, I could.
Could John, John could take it home.
Yeah, that's, isn't it that laptop? I don't know, I didn't.
We've got another, yeah, we've got another one now.
Anyway, I'm just, you, you can see, I'm just having a go, and, and I'm not, I've never been happy about a decision, and I'm just, I'm just having a go, so. Carry, I'm, I'm not, you know, it's not, it's not much, so, carry on, uh, yeah.
That's all we need.
What is the difference between John's role in parish council liaison group, which I did note was tonight, and role number eleven, Y O C A, where you and I have nominated?
Completely different.
Well, what is the difference? Because I'm.
It's Bradford Council, Rome, liaison group.
For all, all his councils.
So that, so.
It's on team.
Six.
It's on team.
Six is Bradford.
Six.
Yeah, V I, six, six is Bradford.
Yeah.
And the other one then is, uh, the Yer.
Y C L.
Y C L.
Uh, uh, that's what I said.
Yeah, okay.
So that's all, all, all parish councils of the area.
Yeah, well, they, they have a conference, I know, because I did go to it in September.
Yeah, but they have these in ones, these meetings, yeah, and, and, and that's it.
Okay, one more on, plastic free Bingley, council director, anyone?
Um, I'm, I'm affiliated with the group in a personal capacity, they have made great progress, um, we, I don't know how long it's been since there's been an update, but they have procured plastic free status for the town of Bingley, which is obviously wonderful news, and they're progressing this, they're working with corporate partners, as I'm a member of the group, and kind of passively at the minute, I don't know how much I can say, but they are coordinating with, um, local businesses to try and increase the impact that they're having, and it seems to be doing a very good job.
Yeah, and all, all I know is that they, they did give us the plastic free awards, which is, and just for the, for the offices. So, police?
Uh, I think I'm not, all right, John and myself, I think, probably since I started with, I haven't had an invitation from, you know, for any of the meetings, so I haven't attended any.
In the past, probably three or four years ago, we used to have regular meetings, uh, with police, uh, that doesn't happen anymore, basically, I thought.
Would you like it to happen?
I'd do an Indian, but possibly not.
And what did it cover off specifically, because I know it comes up with award partnership meeting, but the woman's not on this, this is.
Well, that's, well, that's, probably, then, I mean, to me, um.
So this is something, because I think going forward, some of these, we just need to take off, it's a, it's a, yeah, not, not power group, yeah.
You could take that for a start, yeah.
Pop watch?
Well, there's been one in the last year, um, the organisation of it seems to have been passed to the, um, licensee of the pottingshed, Sean. Um, so I know who he is, but he obviously doesn't know who we are, um, Mo and myself, so I wonder whether we can drop an email to, uh, the pottingshed to remind them, but the, the lady who used to organise it, I don't think she does anymore, I think it's a sort of, again, it's an ad hoc thing, when there's trouble in Bingley, they have a meeting, I can only assume that, because they only have one meeting in a year, that it's all quite on the western front.
I've met Sean a few times, perhaps some of the stuff, he's a really good guy, if you want, I can do an introductory email to reintroduce you back to.
To who, Sean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, he used, used to work for me.
Oh, right. No, it's just that you described me as a people to foreign, but.
I did, I did, I was putting it in town speed.
Cossettes, right, okay, fine.
Yeah. No, I'll have a, I'll have a, well, of course, I've got Joan as well, you see, Joan and Matt, so they were.
Oh, yeah, you probably do know them, don't you?
Yeah, I do, I'm pretty much every public in it, but, what, because I frequent them, of course.
Weather's good.
Yes, yeah, I know weather's good.
Okay, so still good, we have to see, see if we can get back on that one. Uh, scat pack, has that been resurrected at all, or the council gets on?
Yeah, that, that, that actually, um, is attached to some of the meetings of the Shipley Area Committee, where, um, represents from town council, town and parish councils, indeed some other community groups are invited, and they can, um, ask questions and make representations to the area committee.
So it does, it does make, we just don't know if we've had any more.
I know, and Joe receiving a card from the strong.
Yeah. But I presume councillor Clough must be invited if he's down as a nominated person.
Possibly not, but let's, let's just say there is.
What is scat pack?
Oh, I, I had to look it up, I know, I forgot.
Shipley constituency area panel advisory group.
You weren't even reading it.
I know.
That was good.
At least the word for some, some country.
Yeah, it was, it was.
And then Y O C A, I mean.
I, I don't see the, I don't see the point of it, I don't see the point of it, to be fair, because, uh, I rang them yesterday, and they wouldn't speak to me because I wasn't chair, um, so the, you know, what, what help I can get all from them, I'm not sure, other than going to the conference. When I saw the agenda, the only thing I would have wanted to say is that there is no climate emergency, but other than that, uh.
It's not just about them helping you, though, it's about you becoming part of the, like, their, their role, their governing body, yeah?
Yeah.
Become a, one of the.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I, I don't have any aspirations for that.
Well, that's why they have nominated councillors.
Yeah, no, maybe I'm not the right guy next year.
So, so we'll leave that on then, we'll see.
I would, I would ask councillor Gibbons if she has aspirations of going forward, see if white was here to govern in body, yeah? No comment.
I, I don't have a free, even to do something like that. Unfortunately. Okay, so moving on then to feet preservation of Bingley.
Yeah, I, I wrote Philip, after we, uh, Clark had written twice Yorkshire Water, I wrote Philip Davis, and we've got a response which all councillors have seen. We've now got a contact, um, at Yorkshire Water, I suggest we maintain that contact, because number, number of issues with Yorkshire Water present themselves, one is sewage in the river air, um, there are, there are a number of issues, but Pete was the particular one that I was interested, because I do think there is climate change, it's scientific evidence, and we'll have a chat about that, I think, I see. Um, I thought it was a reasonable, reasonable reply, um, they're anxious about Green Cliff reservoir, I can't remember which one that is. Is it the first one or the second? Is it the first one or the second?
It's a bit too light at Dick Orsons and it's on the left.
Yeah, right, okay, that's, um, they're anxious about that. Um, they've become aware that they are free holders.
Yeah, I didn't like that, it's a way of inheriting the.
I think, actually, Chair, if, a, a letter from the, from the clerk to the contact at Yorkshire Water saying, please keep us abreast of any future developments would be a good thing to do, just open the channel of communication.
I'll accept that proposal.
Yep, that's fine.
Do you need a, do you need a proposal for that, or?
Not just to write, I don't know, we, we, we will keep that channel of communication.
Yeah. Thanks to Philip Davies's office, that's actually activating it.
Anybody else got any comments on that? More than.
And they did use the word speed preservation, actually.
Yes, I like, I like that, actually, rather than restoration.
So you need to cancel the ideas, or anything?
Yeah, what it was, obviously, it's just a bit, uh, slightly frustrating when we don't kind of everything and everything's gone to Bradford Council really, and it's just, uh, myself, uh, I think, uh, David and uh, we've sent them all the details in terms of the lampposts and numbers and et cetera. And we, I, I got, I spoke to Eve as well, I said, you know, we need to write them another email, and Eve's sent an email to them, I don't know, up to now, have we had any response? I think if we don't, we need to either contact Simon or something, but I don't see.
Well, there is a world partnership meeting, so, so I, I don't bring it up.
It's a bit frustrating.
Have, have we actually paid money?
I don't know, well, we're paying to the end.
Okay, so we've not got a lot of progress on that, so moving on to finance, that twenty two, twenty three, two point four. We've seen the schedule of payments for February. If anybody's got any questions on the schedule of payments? I know, I know councillor Holden has already quoted, said, payment for trees, payment for Christmas trees.
Is it those?
Hmm, that was my question as well, actually, it's a wacky song of mine, so.
What's that?
Christmas tree, four thousand nine hundred.
No, it isn't. It's for the cottonwood ones.
All right.
So that's four thousand pounds which were, which were.
They started being.
Which were, came from um, Bingle Royal, um, four thousand for each wall, and we've spent all that and the eight hundred is the eighty.
So, so what was it, Chair, can I ask what it was spent on?
Yeah, it was spent, it's spent on, it's spent on um, four, um, twin uh, features, uh, along with all the infrastructure that goes with it, i.e. time clocks and uh, socket, and then a new feature, and then putting up and taking down, and then uh, comes, that's, that's what, like, you know, four thousand budget and discussed it and that's what came up.
It was, it was funded as well.
This was a parish, a parish grant, to get cottonwood.
Yeah, it's, it's, we've actually, we've actually, we've actually had the money in the bank for weeks and months.
Yeah.
Right, thank you very much.
Is that the council of Wilters, is that correct?
Yeah.
Second councillor, all right, yeah. We agreed the bank reconciliations for January, has anybody got any questions on that? I, I think the only change that we've got worth saying is that it's really the grant, the secret title, yeah? Another proposal, is there?
I'll propose that, because I signed it off.
Second pick by councillor, all right, yeah. See, to agree another internal controls councillor, this is councillor Dawson, who was, we're about to, internal.
I was voluntary, so is that the thing I've done before? Under booth, I guess, checking through all the audit, audit of the signatures and filing and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I'll just go for that.
No, I'll say it.
Anybody else?
I'll propose it.
I think he's, he's proposed himself with John saying it.
He is, I'm interested.
So, I, I went further. Now we're into daily bandstand electricity support. Concerning approved, the risk assessment, bandstand. John, you said it?
No, I was wanting to blow it.
Questions, questions.
Go on, go on, ask them back.
Yeah, we all seem to have one figure here, no, we have three quotes.
Right, okay, Eve, let's explain, David, um, I got three, I didn't get three quotes, I got three contractors to look at the job. I got one for initially, and then when I got the other two contractors on site, I was asked if they'd, if they've come with any um, quotes, they said, no can do, we're talking to uh, they were giving names of officers in Bradford Council. Uh, officer in Bradford Council looks after the uh, electricals, um, we're going to have a meeting with him and he was going to produce um, a specification for all three of the, those contractors. The upshot of that was that when he came to look at it, it wasn't just a matter of taking it from the box, which is uh, near the bar, it, it has to, it has to have a new uh, power, power source from um, Northern Power Club. So what happened from that was, he got the three, he's got the three quotes to actually do the contract work, i.e. from the point that when Northern Power did uh, lay the electric, uh, electricity supply, he's actually reduced the initial cost, uh, but he's given us a quote, one, he has given us a quote for the whole job, which includes three quotes from individual um, individual uh, contractors of the Bradford Council panel.
So it had been prepared with the general.
It has, in, in fact, in fact, the, the conversation I had with, with him uh, said that the, the initial quote I had had conferred in the three quotes that he'd had.
Do we have a physical breakdown of this seventeen thousand three hundred?
No, that is, that's, that's how it came from, from Bradford Council, uh, that's the quote that they um, they will do the, the, from the quote that they, from Northern Power did.
Is there any agreement with Bradford Council to foot the bill for the electric?
Yes, and, and we, we, we've written to, I've written to, Eve's since written to them to, for uh, that and versus classification, they have actually said, uh, the email I sent was, would, would they be prepared to adopt any new um, installations and will prepare for the electric and the note that came back from the back, the manager said in principle, they would agree to that.
I think that's my problem with us in the first, or, he has gone back, has, because he said, he said he meant to perform or approve, we've asked for, for, approved of the processes, I don't know.
The thing, the thing I've got to stress on this is that, that quote is a thirty day quote, which ran out today. And, and uh, I'm concerned that we're worrying too much about that because, look at the things we've done in the past, that's um, basically, we, stuff that we're paying for now ongoing, we don't know, it's just worst case scenario. They have said they've done that, and also the specification is from Bradford Council, so how can, how can it not be, if it's, if, if, if they're, if they're doing the specification and all of the installations?
My issue is uh, twofold really, one is the macro, which is, do we want to do it for seventeen thousand quid? Um, which is a lot of money really, and to what's the longevity of the electric supply to do with thirty years, so we do need Bradford to step up, so they're going to pay for it. But on the micro side is, is it a locked off, is it metered supply?
Yeah, yeah, it's metered, so they'll know how much they're being charged, and is it locked off? So if any Tom Dick or Howie can't get to it, so does that mean that some, someone, whoever's going to have to come and unlock it, plug it in and supervise it?
We'll end up paying for supervisory money of when Joe Walsh from Webber turns up.
We need to go back to school model, the fact is, what is the specification that Bradford's done out? Because we don't know what they're actually asking for, do we?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, it's written, it's, it's written on the specification what they're going to do, uh.
Have you got a copy of it?
Not here, but it's.
Give her a copy.
It's been sent, it's been sent out.
But does it talk about access, you know, connecting up and supervision and, you know, risk, uh, there's risk in terms of others, but what about um, who, who's making sure that musician's done electrician, so is that how about all their better? Um, I guess it's same as the market, but does Bradford turn up and connect the market, the artisan market to that, that supply?
No.
Do they do that themselves?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, so what's happening with work apart, is it the same or? I think that's the issue for me, is who's connecting it up and who's coming for the electricity?
Yeah, I'm, just, just, just a couple of points, I think that um, clearly it's a desirable thing to have um, the, the bandstand electrified. Um, obviously, notionally, that's Bradford's responsibility, clearly they're not going to do it.
Exactly.
And, and for that reason, I think it's, it's not unreasonable for a council to want to do that. My, I, I think it is an issue, but I think it shouldn't be our issue about um, future electric bills, because the reality is, if, if, if we agree to help Bradford by installing our thing, I think we just need to make clear in our documents that, that we have no liability um, at all for meeting any future electricity bills. It's not our bandstand, and, and I think that, that's, you know, important to, to, to stress.
I, I've always stressed, I've always stressed that in the, in, in emails to, to Park Department, Jev.
Yeah, looking at this, it's a significant amount of money. Management of it, inspection of it, the longevity of Bradford Council's interest in it, because if it gets vandalised on a regular basis and that it's repaired, might at some stage, a few years down the line, just say, well, fed up of this, the damage builds on the bandstand already and burning holes and then digging floor, we just could have cut it off because we can't be bothered with the expense of maintaining it. We need a service agreement with, with a decent longevity, object where they will be responsible for it, upkeep, maintenance, certification and electricity bills before we go chucking central cameras somewhere and then clean this out by saying, oh, it's been ripped off, we need to cut it off.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the question, if we don't spend it on this, what are we going to spend it? Because.
Actually, what else?
Because, to me, seriously, this is important in as much as it is, uh, would be a great asset. Because just going by, I, I, I purposely asked Eve to circulate the um, the email I just got from Park Department, which says, we're having difficulty getting bands because there's no electric. I went to a meeting with um, Bingle Music, Bingle Music Town, they were talking about having maybe mini festivals or something like that. It's for player festivals, all sorts of stuff, but in the electric, to the, the electric, and that, that, going forward, you're talking year uh, twenty five, twenty twenty five, uh, city of culture, that's another, Bingle is another venue, uh, and when you're talking about um, business case, it's going to attract a lot more people into Bingle than what, what there is now. Uh, I think, I, I, I think it's, if you don't, if we don't, if Bingle Town Council don't do this, they don't do this, it's a missed opportunity. Because the majority of the money, we haven't even had to, we haven't even had to get from the preset. I think they're putting the email, a supporting email, um, that's going to cost thirty five, about thirty five pence per resident. In actual fact, it's about thirty pence. So if you're looking like that going forward, I think we're just looking worst case scenario, I think we're going to, just like, think we're going to waste, you know, waste an opportunity. And I think it could be a real, a real venue.
Um, I think it's fair to just openly sort of acknowledge seventeen thousand three hundred pounds feels like an awful lot of money. Um, that being said, that figure is not likely to go down because that isn't how these things tend to work. And so if we aren't to take advantage of this now, today, basically, what's the cost of doing this in a year's time? And then at that point, it becomes completely irretrievable. Um, so I think that that's what I'm sort of acknowledging, looking at the sourcing of this funding, as John says, we aren't penalising the um, residents of, of Bingle an awful lot by doing that, thirty pence a resident, you said, John, I think that's pretty good value. And Steve, you said that this, if this lasts for thirty years or I, I, this is way out of my warehouse, so I don't know how long these things are meant to last, so I won't pretend, otherwise I'll just go on the back of what you've said. If you amortise that seventeen thousand three hundred pounds, that's about six hundred and forty quid a year to pay for the electrification of the bandstand, that could and should be a venue in the centre of North Park. And lastly, what are we for, like, in a council? Uh, what, what are we meant to be for? If we don't approve this, what are we for? If, we should be wanting to throw our arms around proposals like this, drive it forward, that should be what we're about. We shouldn't be about, I'll go back to it, painting lampposts, we should be doing stuff that makes people excited and bring people into the centre of Bingle, make it interesting, make it vibrant, bring more young people in, make it a destination. If you have this, that means that you are likely to get more people coming to the market on a Saturday. Means you have more people in the park for it, it means more people make use of the centre of the park, means there's more people in Bingle, that benefits everyone around this table, that benefits everyone who owns a business in Bingle. So I ask you again, what are we for?
Yeah, I just, I don't, I think you love the comments I was going to, I think councillor Kedall's, I mentioned, but I think John spent a good amount of time, I know, you know, in terms of this funding, and obviously the same funding, you know, is there, it hasn't been spent, and I think we've asked a lot of councils to come out with ideas, and John's invested a lot of time and effort on this, and congratulations on that. And the thing is, obviously, you know, I mean, I think as councillor Kedall said, that, you know, I mean, we need an answer, you know, I mean, at this, you know, town council, we want to do something for the area, let's get, get it done and everything, and the amount of money, if we can get some reassurance from Bradford Council on uh, the issues, you know, what uh, council, we're hesitant, and we, as I've said, I'm sure, we, we can come to this arrangement and get this project going really. That's what we're here for, in terms of, you know, town councils.
I mean, in terms of sale, obviously John has this that would, every two or four, selling money, we do that on the correspondence, we've got another group that is called, it was, that was ten thousand pounds worth of selling money. We haven't got that application in front of us tonight, because we're set to learn that, yeah, the process said, did say, they need to have got planning permission from the place, so they said to learn, come back when you got it, that's what the process says. What worries me here as well is if we spend the selling money ourselves without having any approval to the companies from Bradford, they're going to take all this thing, so it's almost, you say, is it one roof, the one roof, the one roof for us? Do we bring it back to what we've got rooms? But we do not have a room from Bradford that they will take this on.
Well, two, two things. Councillor Good said, if we don't spend it on this, what else do we spend it on? And I'll say, well, Bradford.
Sorry, I'm sorry Tyler. Yeah. You want mental fight, though? Spend it on, spend it, spend ten thousand on Bingley County, it's gonna, it's gonna, it will benefit about a hundred people. If you spend it on this project, it's gonna attract more younger people. We keep asking to, you know, to put stuff on that attracts them. And so going forward, it's gonna have a much wider benefit to all the residents in Bingley as a small project that might benefit a hundred, a hundred, a hundred people.
I was actually gonna ask you about rivers on the way, which you had nine thousand diam on on the silver last year.
Yes, but that's, that's because, I want, I want that to happen, but will it happen because Bradford Council won't?
We can't help but, John, as I'm saying, we can't help but. And the other one is this.
Have you been that kind of boy?
We can't, we've emptied the silver pot.
Yeah.
We can't help but.
What's bought?
With rivers on the way.
No, I know, I didn't, no, I mean, I want that project to go forward.
We're not talking about rivers on the way.
And my last point was picking up what Lewis said. Yeah, sorry, just picking up what Lewis said, these all on a Sunday? So it goes back to my point about is Bradford willing to come out and unlock the boxes on a Sunday?
Right, okay. I can't categorically say yes or no, but the point that I'm trying to make is that it's part of, they have friends of North Park that are gonna be there on the concerts away from them to put out the chairs. So, for example, at the moment, I still have a key, I can go into the electric boxes in the market square because we did the markets. I would imagine, but I'd say categorically, that that facility will be available, i.e. a key to open the box when anybody wants to use it to frame the North Park.
Just one question, John. What is the capacity size of, you know, is it a single face or a three face capacity for the electricity?
I don't know, but it's, it's added what to do and what's done because the specification's been laid down by the electrical department of Bradford Council.
Does it mean what would that, I mean, obviously it gives a large amount of passive power. That's all I'm saying, is it having, I'd be happy that it would make the difference.
Well, that's a, that's a technical, that's a technical question that I can answer. What I'm saying is Bradford Council's laid down the specification for.
And have you seen Bradford's spec?
No, that's, that's there.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, if they're to be seen, you know, giving them, you know, getting the single person. You have to break it. Don't ask that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You should just tell us what to do.
Yeah, there's been a whole series of issues that relate to Bradford Council and what they are not taking responsibility for. Till they come back to us with, yes, we're gonna do this, yes, we're gonna do that, yes, we're gonna do the other, then we can't really put this scheme forward. We need cast out and guaranteed, service level agreement with Bradford Council, then we can look at plugging it. Prior to that, this is preventing maybe other schemes coming forward.
The thing is, the thing is David, if all the schemes come forward, then this scheme will go and it won't happen. So when it does get to twenty twenty five, Bingley will have, will have a venue to, to put these sort of things on.
We've got a market square with electric in it, multiple.
And the home area.
Yeah, okay, then if we're gonna discuss that, what is the capacity minimum compared to what you've got in the park? And you've got, you've got a stage and everything there, haven't you?
Before I go back to my point, councillor Heseltine, it's a bandstand. So that should be the central point for, you know, bands, not the market square. That should be the center for markets.
The market square is built as a farm area.
The, what's it called?
It was built as a performance area as well. Because it's actually Bingley Town Square.
Oh, Town Square, fair enough. I've only referred to it commonly and heard it referred commonly as the market square. So that's why I thought it was called the market square. And I would suggest why fourteen, fifteen thousand residents of Bingley would consider it a sort of, anyway. And I think that David has, councillor Heseltine has a point actually. I think that we do need an SLA in place. What I think might have proven is if we can identify very briefly, because I think few councils have been very constructive in saying, these are the things that we need, and identify what needs to go into service level agreement. And we could potentially add some providers in and have a vote on it that's conditional. Conditional on an SLA being agreed that takes out boxes and conditional on costs not inflating. Because I think councillor Good who said that the quota.
It's a third year of even it runs out today.
Exactly, so providing it doesn't go up to thirty eight thousand or something, quite ridiculous. And so I'd, I'd propose it with those amendments unless they're too worrying amendment. Okay, well, in that case, what are the, what are the hesitations? Because right now I've got ongoing maintenance, both in terms of costing and how it's provisioned, that maintenance. What other concerns were there that we can box off in an SLA?
Opening it, attending it, in the Sunday attendance. The provision of a key if John wants it that way is who, who's gonna? We don't, we don't want Bradford saying, we've got it there, but we've got a challenge to work with every Sunday.
I suppose what's been certification.
I mean, is this, is this, is this really, you know, obviously it's a serious point, it's probably a hard one to deal with, but I, I just think that's a ludicrous, ludicrous argument this has. I'm sure that, I'm sure that it's in the box there and there's a friends group there. As I said, give Bingley Town, Towns a case to, to market square.
I'm hoping we defer it and let F and G pay them up the service level agreement and agreeing up with Bradford Council moving forward, so that is the capacity value and all that.
That's fine David, however, that's another fortnight, is that, is that what we're gonna hold?
It might get your balls to get a service and everything that happens at Bradford.
I meant, I meant just the thirty day contract thing, so that lapses of amendment.
Well, that lapsed, you just said it comes out today.
He's asked a question, will the whole price for a further fortnight, for maybe three months? Further thirty days?
Or go over it, actually, might come down, I don't know.
Will it now? And so if we, obviously they are likely to hop the price if we try to take them up on it within four or five days of it lapsing versus within four or five months of it lapsing. I think common sense, it takes that. And so I think that sort of refloates the idea of a conditional vote in terms of expediting this so that this council can be the ones that are trying to do this for Bingley. Because we have no dominion over the next council. We've got an opportunity to make a difference ourselves. I'm playing to people who want to maybe consider themselves to have a bit of, try and have a legacy. I'm playing out to want a legacy, I want to play a part of this. The bigger part is I want this because it'd be good for Bingley, to clarify YouTube. But if we can have an SLA in place that Bradford agreed to in eight months or whatever, but we have agreed and we have agreed on the price, then we're in it, then the future council is in a good state because then they've got a decision that they can make. Whereas if we just defer it, which is effectively saying no, then they have no legs to stand on. They have no progress that they can build on that we have done. So it's a massively missed opportunity. So again, I ask, conditional on F and G P going away, drawing up an SLA, conditional on Bradford agreeing that, can we, can we take a vote on whether we want to rubber standards with those conditions in place?
I honestly don't think we can because we don't have any that we take and then walk the price we feel that for. Because I don't see us getting through that necessarily very quickly. Or rather coming back to Australia with a group. And at that point, we can't go through it. Or I'm suggesting we just get on with it and if the group doesn't come, we can spend the second term.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying that we notionally sign off on it and we don't attach a timescale to Bradford agreeing to the SLA, but we write down. That's, that's what I'm saying. And so at that point, when they do agree to it or they don't agree to it, this body can then make a decision on whether to go ahead with it. And the price, I think, common sense implies is going to be nearer to this seventeen and a half thousand pound figure rather than a higher amount, which it could well be. That's what I'm suggesting.
Is there a business case for this?
Well, put it this way, there's a bigger business case for this than what there is for the purple pound, which was spent seventy thousand pound.
That was a, that was a twenty four pound business case, which is councillor Good. Is there a business case for this?
There's a business for this.
A business case, so again, it goes back to the F and G P to say, where's the business head process? That means they want to recommend you put me in place for new ventures. So this is undeniable a new venture. But other than that, I was gonna helpfully suggest that the chair of the F and G P can coordinate an EGM of this council for this one subject, when Bradford come up and only five councils need to be there to be called and it can be approved by this council. Any chair of any working group or so.
I just don't see any of that.
No, but if it did, if it did, then there's the option.
Yeah, I think we've just been going around in circles right now. And at the end of the day, what we need to do either, we need to make a vote regardless, you know, with what happened. I support councillor Craigdale in our second act and we should go on a vote conditionally of this and then take it from there. Otherwise we're just, you know, we're deferring it and we're kicking into touch and we're in some ways. So if, you know, a councillor, you know, goes to put, you know, more time and effort into this proposal, I think you should go on to a vote really. That's my.
Can I just, yes, um. We need to, is there anything, what councils to go to find out if Bradford Council, where Bradford Council's position is on this? Better than my, as I wrote in the email to Park Department, would this would be a major investment company in Town Council to update and refurbish Bradford Council's facilities? I just wonder if, especially with the city culture and things going forward, if this might be something that could be done through yourself and Villa to work.
I could certainly ask, as long as, perhaps if the club gave me some words, which are the particular issues you want me to follow up on. I'm more than happy to send a note to relevant officers. But I can't speak for, I can't speak for what the officers would have responded.
Because I also asked to get in touch with the officer who's sent the vote to see about the lapse, if you want, taller lapse, the contract, thirty day contract.
So John, are you saying you might change what we've got as the three sub parts that is all? There's three sub parts for the whole bandstand.
We've got to get to, get to it now, haven't we? We're not for a hour and a half, so if we aren't going to get to it by now, then we're not.
Given you're saying that we've investigated other opportunities and avenues of funding, I'm saying.
I'm saying, I'm saying to get clarification from Bradford Council, that's all.
So, so, okay, so we, we need to move on, sorry councillor, we need, we need to move on. What is the proposal? Is there an amendment to what's written here that someone wants to propose? Or do we vote on what's, what's on?
Well, if you go, if, it's obvious, it's obvious to me, well, it's gonna be touch and go, it's obvious to me that, it appears obvious to me that because we're all, there's so much concern over this bad, bad Bradford Council that don't have any honor, you know, they're, they're gonna let us down, they're gonna screw us, uh, uh, the ads, the project, that it's not gonna happen. I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to endorse the vote. But if I, if I endorse it and it's voted out, what happens then? That's it, isn't it?
You get three quarters of doing this.
Get frankly, or break it back?
You've done before.
Get frankly, what, yourself until you break it back?
You've done before, right, okay.
All that, all.
Or, or we propose an alternative wording and vote on that?
Well, in that case, I propose that we should spend that money on that thing. And if I, if I get a second and we have a vote, we'll take it from there. But if, if, if the vote is, if the vote fails, um. You can still carry on and talk to Bradford Council about the length of the, see, see how long that, that.
We can carry on with, whether it succeeds, well, if it don't succeed, you have to ask the question of, does this council go through and come and apply it?
Well, I, I, I think.
I mean, that's what you said, you, you.
The thing is that the councils here that aren't here tonight that probably vote for it, that's the area near it.
That's the lot of the drawing, isn't it? Councillor, John.
And with councillor Good's permission, basically, I'd like to propose it with the amendment of a future SLA, SLA agreement with Bradford Council.
Yeah, well, it's not a conditional one.
Conditional on that being approved. And just to be cantankerous from remembering some moves that councillor Williams pulled, if we are going to put that to vote, I'd like it to be recorded, please.
That's a matter for this, sorry Chair, just what he was mentioning there. That's a standing order, you can do whatever you like.
I know, but that's more of a.
You don't need to label it as a stunt that councillor Williams. Because councillor Dawson pulls it very often as well.
I was, I was complimenting your mischievousness.
I'd like it in every vote, please.
May I make a comment on the structure of this meeting tonight? It's an informal discussion going on all on one side. It's very difficult for us to keep up with it as people just drift in across backwards and forwards. Can we get that approved?
Can only one person talk at once, please, from here in. So, trying to paraphrase it, Lewis, I was saying that this number one because we're seeing approved the existing risk and resource assessment for the bandstand electricity supply predicated on.
As I mean.
Subject to an SLA from Bradford.
Subject to a agreement, SLA from Bradford.
Yeah, in trying to act, yeah, in trying to access the documents so I can agree with you, I can add the open football manager on my laptop, so I'm trying to, yes.
Did we get that? Yeah, so.
I was second.
Cannot, cannot be put.
I think, I think that's what, that's what, that's what we're moving then to be seen approved of risk and resource assessment for the bandstand electricity supply, subject to agreement of an SLA with Bradford and make it go.
To include payment of the ongoing electricity charges.
Well, would that be an SLA?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, a full SLA would include operating payments and all.
Within, within your SLA, then there is quite an issue with the bandstand, i.e. the state of the floor, which keeps having big holes in it. One that they will ensure that that floor is fit for purpose. Because we don't want to spend seventeen thousand pound on it and then it become dead because the floor is beggarred. There's another hole in it yesterday.
That would go by maintenance cost, wouldn't it?
No, the floor is shot at. It's, it's past maintenance, it needs sorting. And we need a guarantee that will maintain it in a state that performances can take place on it.
He's got a point.
A good point, yeah. It's a fact, I think, you do, can't.
Yeah, but we're giving to families, we're going to have, you know, we're the one that we want, yeah.
Well, that's why now it's done, Johnny, lots of ways.
But as, as I mentioned. But as, as I mentioned.
Proposed.
Proposed by councillor.
I second that, yeah.
Seconded by councillor, yeah. All in favour? We've got them as, you know, what you're saying.
Yeah, you can call them out, I love it.
Councillor, 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 councillor.
My mind.
This is a, this is a rude test, where you're casting.
And rather, and rather.
Councillor, all against. Councillor, I think, councillor.
Good.
Okay, so we'll move on then to part two. To consider and approve the banister, electricity supply.
Proposed.
Seconded, all in favour?
Can I just see?
Predicated on A, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I don't understand what we're going to.
The first was the risk and resource form, that we always, we always do it.
Yeah.
Predicated on the risk and resource law.
Yeah.
So if the SLA doesn't come forward, B doesn't have one. Yeah, so we're both going on A followed, B followed A.
What's wrong?
So, otherwise, we're coming up in the end again.
Right, and then number three, to agree to utilize the remaining silver funding and money from the regeneration project, all of this cost.
Yeah. We've proved that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we're on to twenty-two, twenty-three, two-one-five, the convergence board of subcommittee. Is that some time, is that anything?
Currently, no, I think our office staff are keeping abreast of any potential changes that we'd asked them to do. Basically, contact detail, still waiting with bins, coming back with some handout cards and potentially some training on the system that we use.
We still couldn't hear that about that grant funding.
Oh, the grant funding. Maybe that's something you could chase up.
Any questions on that? Number twenty-two, twenty-three, two-on-six, the event and marketing and new tensions committee. So it's committed to debate. Um, there were a couple of things that we were discussing going forward. Possible events, you should see the minutes. There's a couple of things people went away to look into. One of which was we have now booked a store, the, the gala. So that should be, that should be, that should be, for people to remember that. There's been some discussion around doing, put something on for the coronation launch. And for that, Martin Weaver has been asked if he thinks it's possible to do something there. It's not got any further than that.
He's said, let me not.
He basically said, he basically said, yes, but as to what might be put on and what form it might take, we need to pick that up. Um, there's a couple of things. Um, the plastic free bin, maybe he's looking to put on. She started out saying it was just the arts and crafts bit that had been being shared. But she's looking to do all of that and, and more in the park next year. So the park might be quite full and busy next year if we get all the other things coming on. And then obviously we've got.
This is for, this is for twenty twenty-four.
That's twenty twenty-four, yeah. And then obviously coming up, we've got CP side that we talked about a little bit earlier. And on a Saturday morning, we've got the hubs open, there's a drop in. But any interested people in becoming, what they're going to become a town councillor in the forthcoming elections.
I ask a question about that last one. We've advertised on Twitter and Facebook, but are there any comments on the posts? Anyone claiming the general interest of the community?
Yeah, that would be those. And, and we do have some, we've got some, and I've been distributing them. If any councillors want to take any away and put them up somewhere, I'd be happy to learn, to generate some more interest. They're. Got it better.
Also, I'd like that we should bribe people with biscuits. I think that's good.
Tea and biscuits are about, it doesn't say that on it, though. Maybe we can get, it's about that space where we've done it.
As a slightly meta-issue, given the breadth of the update from EMAC, I know a few months ago there were question marks of the value of it. Is this the time to try and address those questions or not, given it's a big agenda? We need to move through it.
What, is that what it's worth it now?
Yeah, because there were questions a few months ago.
It's a, it's a meeting that's pleasurable to go to, isn't it?
Is that a yes for you then, John?
In, in the pain and the butt end, but you've got to listen to ridiculous people. It's like the old brain and plane, they were fantastic. You had a few non-councillors there, you, you, you got something done. Yes, it's worth it doing.
I, I agree with you, John, sorry I asked, but there, there were questions like a few, a few months ago. So I just wondered whether they'd be worth the message.
And the other thing, it's, it's the only committee that's going to get outdone, isn't it? Like, is it?
I mean, possibly, possibly not, given that it's made there. But that was the first one of about three times. We need, we don't need to keep that. I personally think it's something that we absolutely do need to drive things forward, but.
Perhaps Chair, the, the new council may have to reinvigorate some of these committees.
The new council will have to take a few one-fourths of these committees. You know, they just want, but they're, they don't want to continue with them. It won't be, won't be close to saying, I said, all right. Any, any, any other questions on EMAC? Number, okay, so twenty-two, twenty-three, two-on-seven, finance and general purposes committee. You've got the, um, the minutes. A lot, a lot of work continues. We're looking at your policy and changes to it is coming, yeah.
I think that's a full, full council that the allotment issue is, is a nightmare. Um, it's, it's, it's getting out of hand. Uh, it's being dictated to by our site rep and I'm playing that into the, to Owl there. Um, I understand, well, I don't understand because I know it actually happened. I understand that you were called, uh, requested a meeting with our site rep. I don't know what the outcome of that was. I would be interested to know.
The meeting with the site rep was just per se with some of her concerns. Um, some of it, I would say, was, um, taking advantage of the change of staff. Put it that way. I mean, as, as part of where we go, one of the things we've said we're going to do, and Debbie's on with this consulting with the allotment holders, because one of the basic allotment policy that we're looking at is what is, what is the role on the site rep? And is that working for us and for them? So they are being asked, you know, what form can we be asked? Do they want the council? Do they, what, do they think the site rep not works? They want a lot of site association or they want to just contact us? So thanks for, I think.
The thing I might say about that is that the problems we've got. The problem we've got here is that we have a site rep who does not, in my view, does not reflect the whole of the allotment. It's a, it's, it's just a dictatorial regime. And if our site rep doesn't agree with it, it ain't going to happen. Uh, she's going to be trying to influence a small amount of people. Uh, it's something, I've got to say this because it's on my mind all the time. It really, really annoys me. Um, I think the site belongs to Bingley Town Council and I think Bingley Town Council should be managing it and not being the, we're, we're there to provide the allotments. We're not there to, to provide a, 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 a social atmosphere and to make it just a practical, uh, op- operation. And unfortunately, unfortunately, I've been involved in it since day one. So that's my view of council and all, I think.
Why don't you say how you really feel, John?
Pardon?
Why don't you say how you really feel?
Don't be a bad guy.
Does anybody have any questions or any comments? Number one then, to twenty-two, twenty-three, till the night, neighbourhood plan, you agree?
Okay, the, um, neighbourhood plan is pretty much complete as far as we're concerned. Uh, it's out now with Aldi Designs converting it from a Word document to a fancy PDF with photographs and proper pagination and power of numbers. Um, the big, the big decision was what to do about Regulation fourteen consultation uh, regarding the pre-election embargo period, um, that's around. So we've agreed to hold off the Regulation fourteen consultation before the elections in May because advice from Y L C A said, you know, you'd just be very careful with that one. Um, so we figured that it was better to go, um, after the new counting. So we've also agreed that the next meeting of the neighbourhood plan would be on the twenty-first of March, where we're hopeful we will have a completely presentable PDF of the, the plan itself. So if any other councillor wants to come on the twenty-first of March to see Richard with his presentation, then that would be a good thing to do. Um, but we've, we've been, good progress is being made now.
Thank you.
Good.
Councillor.
Just gone out, you've looked really good, you've done a full lot of work. Clearly gone into it, so well done.
Water bottle, looks pretty, doesn't it?
It does look pretty, yes.
I think I'm going to think, I don't know. I think we've put out a call for, if anyone has any.
You've done it today.
Interesting photos of Bingley, the, the design and the lights. So not your normal tourist photos, um, but more, more Bingley at work and at play rather than Bingley at rest.
And I guess the other, the other thing to say, Chair, is the town centre boundary. We, we, we've kept with our version of the town centre boundary, uh, which is at odds to the Bradford local plan town centre boundary. And we, we've been chasing the local plan team in Bradford for, um, a comment on our steadfastness and to date, no comment has been coming forth. So that's just a continued litany of the, the slowness of Bradford to react.
I think it's just worth saying, there's not a vast difference between the boundaries. It's just that we've, we've taken things like, we've worked at half over. It's Lidl's car park, not ours.
Their boundary goes through Lidl's and Aldi's car park because they weren't there when they put the boundary in place. But now they are there. Um, and also the magistrate's court has had a change, so it's now going to be residential home. So we've taken account of things on the ground as they physically are, are on the, along on the map. I think that's where we're, we're not, we were odds, but there's no argument as yet. They just haven't commented. Okay, thank you.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, two-on-nine, planning committee, don't look to how it's absent.
The minutes look as accurate as I can remember them.
Chair, could I just comment that, um, I was pleased to see that the council planning committee decided to oppose the two change of use developments in Oakwood Drive in Bingley. And of course subsequently, those have been withdrawn for the time being. Um, and, and, and that was after a lot of, um, activity by residents in Oakwood Drive who I know are very pleased and hoping that they won't be resubmitted in the future.
Councillor.
Sorry to delicately offer the converse view. From what I understand, it was withdrawn because it was felt that young people who have had troubled life wouldn't be welcome in Bingley. And although I can understand a little bit of why did this happen, have to happen next door to me. In fact, my wife's family lived at one of the houses, um, once upon a time. So although I've got a degree of sympathy for that, I think the overall impression of young people who've had difficult times and are welcoming Bingley is an awful one to send out. Um, so I'd encourage residents when they, um, make objections to things to remember the people that are impacted at the end, at the end of the process. Um, because that wouldn't have been nice to digest as feedback.
I understand the question. What's the situation on these masts then?
The, the, the proposed mast.
Well, I've read the thing about this cornerstone thing, have I?
The, the, the proposed mast, which, um, which was going to be in Eldwick, has been withdrawn.
Ah, no.
There's been another one we were saying this.
Yeah, cornerstone, that's on by a farm, farming.
We're going to come on to it.
No, I thought we were on.
Sorry. Well, the question we were doing, to correspond.
Ah, no.
I came in.
I lost the draft minutes.
Sorry?
I lost the draft minutes.
Right, okay.
Somebody's second me.
We don't, we don't accept a majority. No, any other questions on that?
No.
All right, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, there, agreeing, coming.
Okay, so firstly, we had a very organised litter pick. We would have to cancel it on the end, end of January to fourth of February. Um, thanks to Geoff for attending from Bingley Town Council. Uh, there are only, only five people turned up, um, which included a person who hadn't been before and she signed up to be a litter champion, so she must have been impressed with what we did. We've collected ten bags of rubbish. Um, these things might seem, um, going forward, you know, trivial, trivial things, these little picks. But when we had the EMAC committee, um, there was twenty-two suggestions from Bingley residents and about half of them were in our data, so, um. I still feel it as though it's, uh, having, having travelled over to Heaton and down to Bradford and walked from Sunbridge Road down to City Hall today. Uh, thank goodness, we do have some people who are concerned with Bingley, et cetera, et cetera. Because trust me, it's, it's awful. Um, going forward, um, we also held a successful dream in playing for them. Um, eight groups were, were, um, local groups were representative with about fourteen people there. Uh, it was, it was thought to be a success and the, um, the next one's going to be on the twenty-ninth of April. Um, the main speaker is going to be about the clean air zone in Bradford. So, um, that's, 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 that's to be involved. And then hopefully it won't be as long as the, the last one and we will do some networking and some community stuff. But I'm arranging that with Debbie tomorrow. Um, also in the minutes of this meeting, uh, it said that John were going to, uh, be involved in a litter picking cutting later on the first of April and possibly use Bingley Town Council's equipment. That is not going to be the case. Um, I've been, been copying into an email from Cottingley, um, Community Centre to Paul Sullivan, asking where the, um, where the staff of litter picking was going to be. I went and inquired about that and they said Paul Sullivan has it all in hand. So Paul Sullivan, uh, it just happens to be that he's arranged them, I don't know why, he's arranged them on the first, second, third, fourth and fifth Saturdays in April. Or it might be just because it just lands four days away from the election. Could be, my cynical, could be, but I'm not sure. So, so I will probably, because I'm a tolerant person, I will probably get involved, uh, in some way. It does clash with our gardening group, where some of my gardening group usually participate in these things. So whether they, they chip that and take part in that, but I'll, I'll do my, my best as usual on that one. The other thing is, uh, litter champions, we have, uh, good normal litter champions over there. People who have provided equipment to and have, uh, ongoing, uh, doing the thing in, in their own areas. I keep seeing them around and. I keep seeing them around and I believe we're making a real difference. So going forward, if I'm when John's is back in Bingley Town Council, in the new council, I really would appreciate some support from another councillor. Such a marketing idea with Christmas, I feel as though we work off each other and we both beneficial to the, to the thing. I like something like that going forward. It was supposed to be a rouse, but rouse here won some engineering company in our, so that would have a person. And that's just, and I think doing the things in our, I want to.
So you just took, took it?
Well, that's my recommendation.
It should be to every activity we do.
And apart, yeah.
We agreed that long time.
Apart from that, I think, I think that covers it, so thanks for that. One, no, I'm finished.
The next litter pick.
Get, get in quick enough.
The next litter pick's only eleven, we're just finalising, looks like it's going to be in cross line.
That's the one for not.
It's marked with, yeah, yeah, two weeks, two weeks.
Okay, thank you. So next one will be quick, so twenty two, twenty three, two, two, one, Fire Rides Way Marketing. I haven't had any info about from Bradford as the way the brand signs, can they move? And I would have any feedback from, if they are telling you what needs to be changed. I don't know what I can, but so, what's your other, other thing? Well, I, I will, for the rest of, for the rest of the, I will, I will obviously, as I said, I will put a little partnership in next week.
The problem is Chair, we discuss the same issues every week.
Unfortunately, I'm not sure what we're going to do.
Just on the three rides, there's a part of the canal bank is.
Four years ago.
Yeah, it's not a foregone hill, is it?
Well, don't, they, some, some, I'm changing the policy and using this head. How to go at the barrier, they thought, had to put down the old regulation, but there were two big difficulties in that. Doesn't bother me, just help with the service.
So the plans for that, after that?
I'm not aware of any plans. But from knowing the way you said, I do, I've looked at all the old lists and I have to work to try to. Hopefully it will happen. So twenty two, twenty three, two two two, policies to approve the use of personal lines as a road proposal, which we all have.
Sounds like you said that they did.
Oh, yeah, I'm dead, oh, yeah.
Twenty two, twenty three, two two three, the townards with doors, we have the townards with doors. Has anyone got anything to write us? Okay, good, so then, moving on to correspondence, this quite, it's quite a lot of this. So emails from Y L C A, it's prepared, just note to them, I say everybody's got a very particular, what they're on, please, on that, no? Email from Wolves and Parish Council about the Regulation fourteen neighbourhood plan. All the big info on, on that. Email from Brad Council, electoral services, about the process of parish and town elections, we also need some of that Saturday for the hordes that want to come in there, that way you get them to answer. An email from Bradford Council about actually the free spot and each one of the eighteen, eighteen eight percent of the shop from, I know the council board was very, very, very.
You did put it to bed, but I just thought it was poorly written from the point of view of a reader looking at it. Because it was only the small amount which they were actually putting up the graph, other than the allocated money, which was the whole thing. So that, that's what worried me is it looked like Odeon watching Bingley's rants, it was outside the patch again. Whereas I thought that didn't.
But it's not, it's outside the patch.
They still, they didn't bend, they're not bent.
That was, that was the one bit that everybody thought, we must be, from the green, we have to remain because otherwise we have to go background to the hole and go back through the charity stations.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll note, we'll note that. The email from Bradford Council about Bradford, the local plan, the plans for scoping notes.
Can you tell the people, the presentation?
I think they're doing the big preservation.
Actually, it's a special site of special scientific interest, you learn. The other one.
Yes, S S I. We have an email from Philip Davies about any town that we're managing, it's probably covered that under the pool.
We have, but should, should, should we not? It suggests in the email that we need to get in touch with these people and get them to talk to us. We need to know this, don't we?
We should invite them to the, the next meeting?
I think so, because the early discussion was we've backfired it into Bingley Hall, as I thought with John. And Philip was encouraging us to engage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I suggest that we invite them to the next meeting? So we can get moving with this and make some progress before the next session.
We, we can try. We've got two meetings.
Two chances.
As soon as possible, thank you, don't think next one, I think that, that would be great. And we've got an email from the system of the world office about a new shelter in Mountford and a counterfashion response process.
Um, me again, sorry. Just to note, I think that Andy seems to be doing a really good job. He's everywhere, he's doing all sorts of community spirited stuff. Thank you, doing a great job.
I think the only thing that is from yours, of course, in terms of as far as I'm aware, it is going to be on, on Tuesday. It keeps coming up to make, Jeff, the Royal Barter Committee, and there is no funding for it. And the gentleman who, who is, has been asked to work for the fund, he was on the mountain, so.
So, yeah, I think my input, so to the context of anyone who missed it, there was also a conversation about lighting in the park. So I said the sequencing makes sense that the lighting goes first and the shelter, so then we don't have any dark places in the park. That, that is an ideal. And that was under the presumption that we could do both of these things. If we can't do both of these things, one of these things does end zero of these meetings.
Yeah, so I think we allow the light and the shelter, very clearly. Interesting what happened.
Well, because Lewis has mentioned it, what's happening with use involved with word group? Which is on their website reporting to the council, but I'm not aware that it's going, if you've had a semester, haven't you? But I don't know whether it's appropriate to ask him now, Chair?
Not really, we've got, I think it hasn't worked, but I mean, that's it. I mean, I'm affected by, the youth, the services, the cafe arm, I don't think that's established, that's, that's the area where we're working for some signatures.
Yeah, very bluntly and simply, that I had the appetite to do it, but it didn't feel like there was an awful lot of appetite from elsewhere. And that could be because there are other methods of supporting young people, as the Chair has just said. And it could be that they're doing lots of other things, but I didn't have the energy to try and back up ages to get people to come to those meetings as well.
Yeah, potentially the lighting, youth shelter, art servicing department would advantage for young people. And maybe it's something that Friends of Myrtle need to progress and then retention and make a silk funding application to us if the scheme is worthy.
I don't think that will mean it's Friends of Myrtle, please.
It's certainly a temptation with Friends of Myrtle, that, that, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what a temptation means in that context. Maybe they're all quite on that, but I mean, they have asked us for, this is a temptation towards. So is our response to that? In principle, we think it's a good, it's a good goal, but the lighting, the food, the rest of the work.
Yeah, I think there's lighting, management of it, maintenance of it, the potential of dispersing ESP because from a, in a dark corner where nobody can see it, or, or not is the case. Maybe we need to take on more potential problems, but it could also solve quite a number of issues. And I think depends on the war officer, maybe need a little bit more digging. I think I'd be heading in principle, the sort of support, the police moving forward to, you know, some full business case following that.
I mean, the lighting is the big issue, as we've been saying. And clearly without lighting in that area, I mean, people are going to be scrambling around if they are in the dark in any case. But, but of course, it's not only in dark nights. I mean, you know, they, they obviously use those facilities during early evenings and summer evenings and so on and so forth. And with the weather as it is, I don't think it's too much to say that some sort of shed or whatever shed, a cut, youth, youth shelter and couldn't be supported in principle.
We catched that, yeah. Okay, then we have an email from a local resident about the bridge in the West End, internet of William's Bradford Airport. I mean, I have, I have looked at some of the stuff on the research and websites and whether we want to get informed and bring a stakeholder for this territory to fly over Elwood and the rest of the town.
Given we don't have capacity to sort of field the working groups and committees that we've got now, that feels like a mightily big extra thing to buy off that we potentially can't do. To my concern.
I would agree, Chair, it's not something we can actually influence, is it really?
Do you think, do you think we could bring feedback into?
Yeah, a lot of time we're actually doing nothing, going nowhere, really.
But, but we might find a boat and water, get the light, or something, everything is ruined down at the Elwood.
Well, it's a tour. No, it's wind, it's wind, isn't it, wind direction.
Chair, I've got a different opinion on this, and that is, I was woken up last summer by three a, well, flying over at three AM. You've got the windows open in the middle of the summer, and I think this is something that affects every resident in Bingley. And we don't want to imagine that we're just going to be living at the end of a Heathrow runway.
Nothing like that's the case at all, isn't it? I mean, all these planes have to get down.
I was told when I complained about it that it was perfectly all right flying at three AM. I was told they were flying at six thousand feet. I'm actually rather uncertain about that, but I'm not able to prove differently.
There is, there is a tracker that you can prove that evidence, tell you where that airplane went. But there's nothing landing that leads by three AM unless it's been a diversion or an emergency van.
No, it's coming out at three AM.
But that wouldn't, that shouldn't be happening, should it?
It shouldn't be happening, no. But they will say that they had got permission for a number of flights. And as our dear councillor, late, or late councillor, but our former councillor, John Pennington, said, I mean, it is something that affects everybody, airport hours.
What is it something that's, definitely also that we think, we have that concern?
With airport in their donkeys, you know, that's a lot of change.
But that's not to say this is a rudder, we could make representation on an as and when basis.
Okay, noted. And we've got a letter from a resident about the traffic in Elwood and the need for traffic calming measures.
They need to refer to Bradford Metropolitan District Council, like that.
It's not, not in our gift.
It's not in our gift.
Because there are things in the past that we, we have, that, that there was a crossing behind, but I want to show it to the law.
And of course, there was a crossing and provided in Elwood as well, just, just over the road. I mean, I, I don't think ideally there'd be any greater speed restrictions going through the centre of Elwood. But there's been numerous different attempts at traffic calming initiatives, and all of them have people for and against them because of the, you know, the, how they affect different players and such.
Yeah, I, I had a meeting a couple of years ago where the same people were arguing about the speed of the curb on the road out there and also complaining about the parking outside the, the shop. And the parking you've designed, I understand, it's created natural to slow, to slow the traffic down. So we have the same people arguing both sides of the coin, so you can't all.
I think it's fair to say it is still a problem for people in Elwood. But all sorts of initiatives have been tried, trying to address the problem. And, and if, if, if people can come forward with good technical solutions which haven't been thought of before, I think we'd love to make further representations. But, but I struggle at the moment to figure out what the solution is to this problem.
I think the check the speeds, and they've determined that it is not anybody flying through the village. But that'd be odd one, of us, but not a lot. And it does slow it down with the zebra crossing, and when you approach the post office coming up there, with the vehicles parked there, that slows them down. And even coming along from the opposite end, I'm worried there, it slows them down as well. So, yeah, you will get the unseating one, but not in, in lots of ways, is what I'm told, I mean, from the feedback. But you'll always get somebody complaining because you can't get out the end of Shirley Flane. If the park in the proper places, you're all right, but the park on the double yellow, that they're calling by the post office, the park opposite the, what was the hairdressers, which is like a little lay-by. The park there, you can't see a damn thing left, all right, you can't get out. And, and, you know, how do you manage it? It's, it's, it's difficult. So, but there could be an accident, it's sort of playing.
This particular resident, we were sort of looking close by the roundabout, so isn't that one of the places we would consider for the SIDS anyway as well?
That was one of the SIDS suggestions, I guess. It was a matter of finding metal lamp posts, unfortunately, a lot of the road isn't there.
And, oh, there's only one down, isn't there?
So maybe, maybe from the hips, we'll come back from Bradford, we can say we can help me to go that far tonight. Then we've got the email, then we can put it car, three silver round, so. Although that, 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 and then we can back in, and then we can go as we like.
We've just got a few more coming in as well, one from Bingley Business Expo, twenty three.
Two more, yes, that, that is, do we want to have a store in the Arts Centre for Bingley Business Expo, which is Wednesday, twenty second September.
Did bring you all control.
Yes, we have, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because there meant to be eight grand, I thought, so.
Yes, it would, it would, it would have trade off that we, we took off, we took off time on our, on our, on our, yeah.
I mean, I think as long as we can get camps for us, it could probably work, it can land in the store. So it could be to reserve a store, you know, for now.
So, reserve it by December, actually, I think.
And you can't do a lot and. Change the background. And then there's the gentleman that got forced to leave.
Then we're not, then we're not, then we're not, sorry, then we're not thinking that they should be right, because the council are asking them. What we, yeah, what we think is going to last, you think?
I don't want to do the right to.
Like all the others, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just asking. Oh, that. If you imagine, that's what it is.
She has my name, but I think for this, for this particular state and council.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the other one I've got, in terms of correspondence, is the thing that came from Cornerstone, which is another five June last, from Medestory Farm, is it there?
Spring lanes, there's already one there, isn't there? I'll look and do it, extend the height, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's come to us all, but I think, I think really we need to refer it to planning committee.
Is that presumably instead of the, of all this?
No, no, there's one already up there.
Oh, no, I mean, instead of the one which they wanted to build in.
That's a difficult one. So the one that they wanted to put on, this event was thrown out, so this is an infrastructure company that says, that is, well, they try and get many, many companies to use their, okay, number one there, so twenty-two, twenty-three, two, two, five, emotional items. Consider it emotional items, publicize them.
It's, with respect to you, I think it's been a long meeting, which has been fairly introspective, but there are a couple of things, which is the open morning. I think we should continue to advertise that.
And the C P Grand and Bay.
And the.
Yes, okay, I'm happy, I'm happy to, they're very, they're very close to the, to the public.
Yeah, I get that, yeah. And the C P tour at Open, in reference. And then the neighbourhood plan draft is being deferred, regulation four. I think we should drop the words regulation fourteen, consultation, and, you know, in there, so that the, the people, yeah, people know it's coming and we're not losing sight of it.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Perhaps explain what it is as well, so that laypeople.
The regulation, the council, and that is one, try one. Other than that, it's very difficult to see them, especially in this, at the end of it.
Yeah, I did, temporarily forgot what I was going to say. Yeah, about the neighbourhood plan, at some point, I know that when the councils were still within our, the councils, the market was still within our gift, there was a talk about having a stall and then introducing people to it, has that been considered as far?
Yeah, but the, the whole, there's a whole plan involving postcards and open days and things like that, but all of that is a consultation. So all of that has been put into the mix of the year.
We do, Chair, we're a little fan spell on electricity, which we've had a long time discussing, and several people have had their voice several times on the topic this evening. And that's a lot of work that John Good has put in, and we're playing it into, but it might be worth mentioning publicly that we are interested in electricity supply there, and so that it becomes more useful as music, I mean.
I think, I think that was a decision we took, so it should be advertised, supporting, in council power, in point of view, that we took a decision in principle, subject to an S L A.
Yeah, it needs to be subject.
Anything else that Andy brought you? John, did you want your next topic, Professor?
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right, that, oh, go to tomorrow, but just. Because we had another email this morning, I deferred it because I thought it might be the suggestion for another site, because it came from Andy Ellison, that were another political, that were another political gesture, but we're walking into. But it's something that the elections go for, I don't know, but anyway, there we go. So I've discussed it with, you know, friends of, sorry, that's what I feel it's exciting, because they don't organize the wrong, so I, it's a lot, I sort of half care to say, anyway, we're getting on, this is, but we'll, I'll just have to decide where we're going to do it from, okay?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, two, two, six, the date for next meeting, do you agree? The date for the next four council meetings, that's Tuesday, twenty-eighth March.
Chair, could we, could we take points on view from this side of the room, that actually slightly different arrangement, tables would help? Because hearing has been quite difficult for me this evening. I have to speak to my fellow councillor on my right.
Yeah, well, we're, we're really struggling in this room, because, I mean, we, we need someone to come and share us our microphones, whether it's Zoom, that helps. But generally, the other thing is, it's laid out a lot of this, so that you don't, we don't have a lot of councillors with their backs to the members of the parliament.
Yeah, I'm really sorry.
No, it's because six, but that's why we don't generally do it that way. I think we suffer acoustically almost wherever we go. I don't really know what we're talking about.
The, the other option, Chair, is for you to sit in the middle here, and go that way, and so the audience is there.
So it's still thing that, and was it either of the councillors, so they're giving each other.
Do we need to discuss this now?
Let's move to another meeting, Chair.
Yeah, so we need to agree the date for the annual town meeting.
The old May, ladies and gentlemen.
We need to agree the date for the annual town meeting, and this is the one where we invite people back and resume grants to see how they've done, and generally publicize all the things that the council delivered for the previous year.
Once suggested there.
Yeah, I've got one, I just, before the other days, they put up with the meeting.
We've got a town council meeting scheduled for the fourth, Tuesday in April.
It's always the last Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This needs to be separate, doesn't it, or can it be held at the same time? Because last year, did it held on the same evening?
No, I think it was separate.
Right.
It doesn't have to be separate, I think it's, it's a completely different format and everything.
Yeah.
Generally, I mean, we get the groups that have grants to give presentations and that kind of thing, so it's not, it's not an annual. It's not a meeting like, that's all council meetings, and it's a whole lecture, isn't it?
In, in the absence of anyone else proposing a day, then can I propose the nineteenth April, the Wednesday before?
I'm just, just looking to see if there's anything, if there's anything in that or anything on.
That would normally leave the email, wouldn't it, the third Wednesday?
Why don't you go for the Thursday then?
Well, given the proximity to the election, what value could we have from that particular email?
I think, I agree, I agree with.
We'll have to check venues anyway, all the way.
Yeah, I mean, this might actually be a good venue for that, because it does have screen, it's really pretty, it'll be long to give presentations, and it might give us an opportunity to see to all, okay.
What door is that, is it screening?
Screens.
Oh, that's my, oh, screen, screen, no, it's, it's.
It might be, it might be a reasonable venue.
Well, the beatenness.
Okay, so we have one, so twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-seven, exclusion of the pressing problem, I'm sorry, sir.
Did we not agree that for the town meeting?